Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's nice to see a big crowd. It's really great to see all your smiling faces. We're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Walker. I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a few seconds to remember the people who are stuck somewhere and are suffering underwater. Hope that things will work out. All right. Thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Ms. DeRae.
President.
Ms. Green.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Lamar.
Yes.
Ms. Levenstein.
Yes.
Ms. Meneo.
Here.
Ms. Straight Iron.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
For our next section, Dr. Manning Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we will be recognizing some of our Superintendent's Literacy Challenge participants. As you'll remember, during the winter, we put forth a challenge for students and families to engage in reading and reading activities to promote literacy in our community. More than 1,000 students officially participated, reading more than 500,000 minutes from our elementary and middle schools this winter.[92.54][92.54](applause) Students here tonight were selected by their principals to represent their schools. Mrs. Moriarty will be reading their names. We ask that students come to the front once your name is called for a photo and recognition.
I have the great honor and privilege tonight to recognize these avid readers, and I just have to give a little plug. During this Literacy Challenge time, it was really exciting because we were all watching the graph go up with where the readers were reading, and we would get so excited about the passion for reading and for literacy. So I know there are a few principals and assistant principals in the room tonight, so if you'd like to come up and help me pass out the certificates and have the children go up to the front, I deeply would appreciate the help. So first, this evening, recognizing from Baumville School, we have Rose Lani Metz.[170.31][170.31](applause) And here she comes. From Foster Town, we have Joseph Olson.[189.23][189.23](applause) Oh my goodness, how precious. And in, from Gidney Avenue, we have Enaru Carancia.
Enaru.
Enaru, I'm sorry. I was really worried I was going to mess that up, too, and I did. Ensaana.
Ensaana.
And we also recognize Johnny Sagastumi. I don't believe he's here yet, but he's also from Gidney Avenue.[226.65][226.65](applause) From Heritage Middle School, we have Iker Gonzalez. From Horizons on the Hudson, we have Nadia Mohana and Kennedy Staples.[252.23][252.23](applause) From Meadow Hill, we have Kiana Alexander.[262.44][262.44](applause) And my Chico Fumato.[266.77][266.77](applause) From New Windsor, we have Jose Cardosa Jr.[277.12][277.12](applause) From Temple Hill, we have Isaiah Alvarez and Luis, oh, Luis, I don't want to mess this up, Guasaco?[292.27][292.27](applause) Guasco. Muy mal pronunciation, I have. And also Isaiah King and Romala Lloyd from Temple Hill.[304.77][304.77](applause) And from Vales Gate, we have Areli Gonzalez and Gabriela Morales.[314.95][314.95](applause) At this time, I also understand that there are siblings of those who are being recognized by their schools, and they may be in the audience and also participated in this Literacy Challenge. So I'd like to invite those participants to the front as well. So if there are siblings that participated, please come on up and get your picture taken So not only are they wonderful readers, they're really cute, too.[349.56][349.56](laughing)
They are delicious.
So my Literacy Challenge representatives from your school tonight, on your way out the door, we have three tables set up of books and also an end block sticker for you. So please pick the book, maybe on your reading level, or just the one that looks interesting to you. And congratulations to you all.[372.00][372.00](applause)
One, two, three.[375.12][375.12](laughter) Just to be sure, one more. Are we ready? Our biggest smiles? One, two, three.[385.53][385.53](laughter)
I love it.[388.78][388.78](applause)
Thank you very much. That was really nice.[481.78][481.78](applause) Tonight, we will be recognizing our retirees. Before I introduce Mr. Macklemore, I would like to thank all of our retirees for their dedication and service to educating our children. There are countless lives that you have positively touched by your professionalism, compassion, and devotion to our scholars. Thank you, and I wish you the very best of luck in your retirement. Now, Mr. Macklemore will share a few words and present our retirees.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, to our Board President, Carol Meneo, Vice President, Mr. Howard, and to the members of the board. So on tonight, we want to recognize all of the retirees from this past year. We have 70 retirees, but all of them could not come on tonight due to other commitments. So we just want to read something to you that will hopefully set well in your spirit on your retirement. So it's important, it's super, super, super important for us to thank and to recognize those of you who are heading into retirement. Everyone in this room knows that you won't get rich working for a public school. People become teachers and others work for the organizations like this to make a difference in students' lives, whether they are in a class, meeting with them in the hallway, conversing with them in the cafeteria, or the nurse's office. It's all teaching them, it's all about teaching them that they can accomplish their goals and become whoever they want to be in this world. It's about showing that you can make a difference in a student's life by the day-to-day things you do for them. Those small things work together to make a big difference in the lives of others. It's about showing up to work and giving your all even when you don't feel well. It's about working behind the scenes and not desiring the credit. It's about giving your best even when others don't know your worth. It's about being available for the sake of the organization and the students. It's about honesty even when others aren't looking. For these reasons, we celebrate you in the next chapter of your life. For these reasons, the Newburgh and Large City School District has experienced organizational success. There was a young man who was standing at the end of the dock, peering down at the water, and the old man was standing by him and watching the young man. The young man said to the old man, "The water seems to be deep." The young man said, "If I fall in, do you think I would drown?" The old man replied, "It's not falling in the water that poses the problem, it's how long you stay under." So we understand that some of your days in your career has not always been easy, but you managed to master it and not allow yourself to stay under too long. Thank you for adding value to this organization. We're going to miss you and your good work. We want to wish you well. We hope you enjoy and find new meanings beyond work. You deserve all the best, and we wish that you may find it. Congratulations to all of you that are retiring.[773.69][773.69](applause) So what we would like to do at this time is we're going to read the names of those of you that have responded to the invite, and we just want to give you a token of our love and to show you how much we appreciate you. And hopefully, you'll find fulfillment in retirement. So I'm going to have Sarah Van come up. She's going to read the names, and I will be presenting you your token of appreciation.
Denise Bernstein, 25 years of service.[845.12][845.12](applause) Timothy Chanowitz, 22 years of service.[860.19][860.19](applause) Catherine Hurley, 26 years of service.[893.51][893.51](applause) Tara Jones, 31 years of service.[911.62][911.62](applause) Lorraine Livolci, 15 years of service.[927.23][927.23](applause) Karen McCartney, 20 years of service.[941.12][941.12](applause) Janet Rodriguez, 22 years of service.[995.86][995.86](applause) Sandra Roel, 34 years of service.[1012.69][1012.69](applause) Patricia Sanzavero, 19 years of service.[1046.83][1046.83](applause) Correction, 20 years of service.[1055.25][1055.25](laughter) Keith Schaefer, 27 years of service.[1066.08][1066.08](applause) Sharon Sharp, 33 years of service.[1081.01][1081.01](applause) Linda Smith, 27 years of service.[1095.15][1095.15](applause) Nancy Stewart, 30 years of service.[1109.08][1109.08](applause) Teresita Stewart, 28 years of service.[1121.92][1121.92](applause) Mary Tenstrom, 22 years of service.[1135.83][1135.83](applause) Christine Van Wagner, 25 years of service.[1147.83][1147.83](applause) She said 27.[1158.33][1158.33](laughter) Sean Scott.[1184.83][1184.83](applause) Madeline Alma, 23 years of service.[1215.01][1215.01](applause) Roland Gutierrez, 31 years of service.[1231.65][1231.65](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore and Ms. Vaughn. Next, Ms. Moriarty will be introducing our pre-K program presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Manning. I have the privilege to introduce this evening Ms. Tara Marshall, principal of our universal pre-K program.[1516.58][1516.58](applause) Ms. Marshall has been our pre-K principal for 10 years, and our pre-K program is very robust. We serve 650 students in district and with our collaborating community partners, but I don't want to give her whole presentation away, so I welcome Ms. Marshall.
Thank you very much. Good evening.[1542.15][1542.15](applause) Good evening, Madam President and Superintendent Manning Campbell, our Board of Education, our Central Office Administrators, and our school community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about our very unique program. We are very lucky to have such a large program and serve almost an entire grade level, when you think about it. Is my sound okay? I hear my own feedback, so I just want to make sure. Good for you. Okay, so we'll begin. The goal of this presentation is to give you a highlight of the entire program, and we have lots of pictures of our pre-K students to give you an idea of the types of activities they're engaged in during the day. We actually have had pre-K in Newburgh for over 50 years in some capacity, which is astonishing. Not too many school districts have that good fortune. We also expanded to full day in 2014, so we're entering our 10th year of full-day programming, and we have 10 locations, so we're able to offer families a lot of different environments based on the needs of their children. And just like Ms. Moriarty said, we serve, have the capacity to serve 653 students. So part of our program is served in the public schools. We have four schools that serve students with Baumville, Gardner Town, Gidney Avenue, which is where I'm located, and Horizons. And throughout the presentation, you'll see additional photos of the children kind of sparking their curiosity. I just have to tell the one story about Isaiah here. Isaiah, when I asked the teachers for some pictures, they gave me some narratives of what the pictures are about. So Isaiah is a student who every morning eats breakfast, takes the seeds out of his fruit, tries to grow them. So here he is, holding his apple seedling that he grew himself, and if you look behind him, they have all of the samples that he's been trying to grow all year. So a big part of pre-K is really sparking their curiosity and maintaining their love for learning, which hopefully parallels to you as an adult, because I think it's really very parallel to what we do to enjoy our lives every day. This is the other half of our program, which is in our community-based organizations. We have a variety of programs at Healthy Kids, Little Harvard, SUNY Orange, Windsor Academy, Young and Unique, and Head Start. And so what you'll see through some of the photos is there's a lot of parallels and continuity in programming, because that's the goal. When we offer programs to families, we want them to have confidence that all our programs are high-quality and that they're all interconnected. So you'll see, like, the third picture over. One of the things that all of our programs study are different topics. We studied buildings. So Little Harvard had someone who worked in planning, and they had brought in a full-on blueprint, so kids were working together, talking about the blueprint, talking about rich vocabulary and things like that. So you'll see a lot of the pictures, they're either super happy or super focused on what they're studying. We also have the pleasure of working with New York State Office of Early Learning. They're very supportive. They visit on-site every single year. This year, they visited probably 75% of our programs. So the big portion that they're looking for is the learning environment, because the learning environment is very telling of what is happening in the classroom. So what is on the walls, how the room is arranged, what's offered in the centers, that's indicative of what's happening in the classroom. These are all the topics that we're charged with monitoring, and at the end of the year, we complete a final report talking about our enrollment, some of our demographics, the languages of students, the diverse needs for exceptional learners, and our outcomes. The fun part of pre-K, which most people are like, "Oh, does this look like a great place to be?" Well, it is, but it's very intentionally planned. So if you go into any pre-K classroom, you should see the following learning centers or interest areas. This is what a third of their day looks like. We're required to have two hours of intentionally planned, student-choice-driven time. So students may choose to go into blocks. So students may choose to go into blocks. Are they learning in blocks? Yes, they are. They're learning how to figure out how to work together, what materials to use. They may end up building something that reenacts what they've done in the classroom. So all of that time in the centers is really teaching you that life skills of problem-solving, expressing your thoughts, your wants, your needs, your vocabulary, how to behave when you don't get what you want, which will come up in another one of our slides. Navigating that, that's September, so fun. So the other piece of the program is studying creative curriculum units of study. So we pick topics that are closest to what kids see in their everyday life and what they're interested in. So one of our units of study is trees. You're going to see a tree everywhere you go, so there's always a learning opportunity. Reduce, reuse, recycle. You'll always find things to talk about in that category. So that's something you'll see across the program. Another part is really on helping them regulate their emotions. So we collaborate with the pyramid model, and one of the strategies is tuck-or-turtle. And it's really about when things don't go your way, how do you identify the emotion? I think adults could do this, too. Identify the emotion, kind of go into your shell, which might be your car, your office, and then come out with some problem-solving strategies of what could I do differently? So tuck-or-turtle. This is actually a picture of our social worker, Melanie DeJesus Russell, who works with our creative play specialist, Jennifer Tuthill. And they voluntarily work together to make sure all pre-K kids at GAMs were able to learn that strategy. Another really strong partnership we've been able to develop is with Quality Stars. That is really an organization that's intention is to make sure all programs in New York State are high-quality. They offer us materials, supplies, professional development, individual professional development. Staff has been able to take courses, online courses, and it's to no cost to the district or to the staff member. So we've worked with Eileen Flickers since, I would say, probably 2000, I'm going to guess, I'm dating myself, if I start figuring out the ages, but probably about four or five years. And we meet monthly across the programs to really identify goals and look at the quality of our learning environments. And then the fun stuff, data. As you would well assume, when students start pre-K, they may be at risk for referral for special education or may be delayed in some of the skills necessary for a school environment. A big part of it is making sure they get an opportunity to a high-quality learning environment. So we observe children, we screen them, and these are the objectives that we take a look at: social-emotional learning, their physical development, their language development, cognitive literacy, and mathematics. And we did actually have a very high level of students at risk for referrals, so almost 30% at the beginning of the year. And I'm going to share with you a few slides to show some of the growth they're making. So a big part of intervention is pre-K, and they make tremendous gains because they're doing, we're doing all the fun stuff they like, and they don't even know that they're learning while they're doing it. So one of the goals is around their social-emotional needs. So this is just middle-of-the-year data. We're still wrapping up the end of year, but by the middle of the year, so the end of March, 82% of the students were able to follow limits or expectations. Now, we hope they did that at home, too, but they did it in school. And a big part of it is knowing that it's not always what they want for how long they want to do it. So that's huge, 16% increase. Literacy outcomes, a big objective is knowing the letters of the alphabet focused on their name, so it's very child-centered. So we've had, we had 90% of our students know the letters of at least 10 letters or the letters in their name. Another literacy outcome was just around being able to accurately or partially write your name. So 94% of the students were able to do that by middle of the year, which is a 44% increase. And the last one was mathematics, which is a much more difficult task and is also, you probably have seen trends, K-12, about maybe a lot of focus on literacy. So 66% of the students were able to meet that widely-held expectation, which is like counting to 20, quantifying objects. So I'm hoping to see more growth on that in the end of the year. Well, if you want to know how your program's doing, ask your families. Here's just a sampling of some of the things that families have said. A big part of the transition into pre-K is building the trust with families. Families, they're giving us their youngest child on a bus, so we want to make sure that we have a trusting relationship. So that's one of the things that we get good feedback, is that they trust us, we're very attentive to their needs, high communication, and they basically feel their children are making really great gains in preparation for kindergarten. Now, if you really want to know how you're doing, you ask the kids. And if you look there, you see a lot of parallels between what do you enjoy doing? They love being with their friends. They love to make things and be creative. I love Giselle here. She loves to sleep, even though that's probably not the top 10, but it made it on the top 10. Milo loves to learn. They learn about trees. They love working with letters. So it gives you kind of that same theme of what they're doing. A lot of it's around the things they enjoy doing, but with the teacher being intentionally planned. So my last comment before I close would be, if you know a child that lives in Newburgh and will be four by December 1st of this year, send them my way to Gidney Avenue, go on the website and register, because we have plenty of space for all of the children, and it's certainly a great place to be. So thank you for the time to present tonight.
Board members, any questions or comments for Ms. Marshall? Yes, Mr. Livingston?
Just one question, and maybe it was kind of answered on the last slide. Have we ever had to turn away children that we didn't have enough seats in the pre-K program?
We have not had to turn students away. Sometimes they have to wait for the school that they prefer. So we zone children based on the busing. So like, if they're zoned for Baumville, see, if they didn't register within the registration window, they may be wait-listed, or we try to encourage them to go to another program and start school, and then consider whether they want to change after they start. Usually, when they start, they don't really want to go, they stay put. We really haven't had to turn anybody away.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
You're welcome.
It was a really great presentation.
Thank you.
We're now at the section of the Agenda for Public Comment and Discussion and Comments on Agenda Items. Please refer to the Regulations Regarding Discussion and Comments. We have no one signed up for Agenda Items. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on Agenda Items? If not, we'll move on to non-Agenda Items. We're now at the section of the Agenda for Non-Agenda Items. Please refer to the Regulations. And we do have a couple of people signed up. Ms. Antonia Lozenensky. Mr. John Schindler.
Sorry about that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is John Schindler. I'm one of the Newburgh school bus contractors in this district. I'm asking you to reconsider an RFB from May 25th that was awarded on June 6th but was not approved by the board. It's for the Extended School Year Program. I was one of the lowest bidders. I've been in this district, working here since the early 1980s, our company. While the board did discuss some isolated incidences, those were fully investigated or addressed, resulting in no adverse findings against contractors. Handling difficult student management issues are an inherent part of student transportation. My drivers, my monitors, my aides, my dispatchers are subjected to some of the harshest conditions of transporting these kids safely to and from school. Some are on the bus for a long time. I ask you guys to please consider them when you turn down this work. They live in this district, they work here, they put their heart and soul into this job. They need this job, and they need this summer work. The kids need to go to school, especially the special-needs kids. Only one company was subjected to inherent and microscopic investigation into certain things that were not in the bid specs. Ignoring the statutory process of awarding contracts to the lowest responsible bidder is not supported by the New York law and will result in the school spending thousands of additional dollars of taxpayer money for no reason. Therefore, we ask you to reconsider the bids submitted to the lowest possible bidder in request for bid 320098 for 2023 Extended School Year Transportation. I've also sat back and watched the last four months of this board meeting, because my company has been subjected to some harsh criticisms. And I will say this, there's a lot of talk about transparency of a new board, new ways things are going to be done. If that's the case, I can only speak for myself, but I do have good relationships with the contractors in this district. We welcome a relationship with the Board of Education. We beg for it. There's a lot of things that we could use help on. There's a lot of things that you probably don't know that we deal with, my employees deal with. There's one of them sitting right behind me right now, and I had no idea he was going to be here. I don't know why he's even here, to be honest with you. I don't know if he's here to support me or if he has something else he'd like to add. But it does mean a lot that he's sitting there. So again, I ask you guys to reconsider the Extended School Year Transportation, not just for me, but for my employees and for the students of this district. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Ray Harvey?
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam President, Dr. Campbell, esteemed board members and colleagues. I was gone for two weeks, but I watched the board meetings, because it's important that we stay focused. There was a lot of great things happening this week. One of the things that I really want to talk about is my Brothers Keeper Program. I was so thrilled to be invited to that program, right? And we need to build that program. We really need to really jump aboard with this program, because I had an opportunity right before I came here to meet one of the young gentlemen that is in that program, and just to talk to him, not in a school setting, but just on South Street. And he told me how important it was for him to be in that program. So we need to build that program, and that's what we got to start doing, because I didn't hear a lot of negative things coming at this board meeting from board members that we need to stop doing. If you have problems, talk amongst yourselves, try to resolve that, so when you come out here and present to the community, you are united. We don't need to talk about the past, and I'm going to hear about Padilla 6. I don't want to hear that again. That's in the past. We need to concentrate on the graduation rate here in the city of Newburgh School District, and what we going to do moving forward with the problems that we are having here in the city of Newburgh School District. And it's just not unique to the city of Newburgh. Since I've been back, I was called to Pine Bush as the president of the NAACP, and I was called to Central Valley. And we way ahead of them districts, them schools. They don't even have bilingual teachers, because they wasn't ready for the fluctuation of the community that was coming to their district. So their problems is probably twofold than ours. We have the resource, so let's use it, but let's work together to do it. Let's start coming out, see what the community needs, the community wants, and these events, when the library has their great events that they have for the community, when we had great events this weekend, educating people on Juneteenth, come out as board members, learn from your community, what they expect for board members, how they act, what they expect for their board members to give them when it comes to their kids in this district, these young folks that we turn over to y'all every day. The highlight of my life is when my grandbaby can come visit us from Millital. And to hear her and Mimi, because that's what she called my wife, her grandmother, Mimi, sitting there, she's six years old, and she blows my mind, how smart she is. So we have, we have these smart kids. We just got to make sure we keep them focused, keep them, keep their mind on the prize, which is graduating, which is becoming productive citizen, not in our community, so they'd be willing to come back. We need more teachers. We need, all these people, all these teachers and people that graduated tonight, that's a big loss. That's a big loss. But we also need to start looking at how do we recruit minority teachers? Because I heard that, I had a chance to meet the superintendent of Central Valley. Was it Central Valley? Yes, yesterday in Walden, at the Juneteenth event. And she's having the same problem recruiting as we are. She just got that position. So let's work together. The past is the past, people. Let's focus on our goal, which is make Newburgh, let Newburgh be the example for all the schools in New York State. Thank you.
Ms. Shadé Burks?
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Mrs. Campbell, Dr. Campbell, good evening. My name is Shadé. I am here in representation of my son. I just, he just had his last IEP meeting. You know, the last IEP meeting, they evaluate them, see where they're going to place them for the next year. So I advocated for him in May, no, in July, during his summer school year, and I spoke to the Special Education Director and the Supervisor of Exceptional Learners, and I expressed to both of them that I did not want my son placed in an 821 class, that my fear was if he was placed in the 821 class, the behaviors would escalate from what they already were. He was placed in an 821 class against my wish, and the behaviors escalated. He has fought this whole year to get his behaviors under control, and he has accomplished that. However, he hasn't gotten to the full extent to where his teacher feels that he would be better in a 1211 or an ICT class. It was recommended to me by his summer school teachers that he would be better in an ICT class, so that is why I recommended it. When I went out for special education for my son, I was not aware that my son would just be thrown in an 821 class, because I advocated for him to have a smaller setting because of his attention span and because of his need to be able to focus more. However, my son was thrown in the 821 class against my will. He has done very well this year. Now, he's going to be going to GAMs, and I don't agree with that. All of the children from the 821 classes will be going to GAMs. I am fighting against this, because like I've been saying since the beginning of the year, why are we throwing all kids that have behaviors in the same class? It is a disadvantage to every child in that classroom. He has to go to summer school at Bosse's. That is an hour drive away. If you guys are saying that he can't sit in an ICT class or in a 30-person class, how do you think he's going to be able to sit on a bus for an hour to wait to go to Goshen? I have, that's an hour away. What if something happens to my son on the bus? What if something happens to Goshen in Goshen? I won't be able to get to him for, until an hour. It's sad that when we request help from the district, that now, as a single parent, I am regretting that I requested help, because my son is not getting the help that he needs. I sat here last week with a parent who I call my sister, because she's grown up with me, and I watched her advocate for her son after she messaged me and said, "Sis, what can I do? My son is not being treated fairly at Heritage. What can I do?" I watched her come up here and speak last week, and after she spoke, she got everything that she needed for her son. As the vice president of the Newburgh Parent Alliance and advocating and fighting for other children, I watched my pre-K class graduate today, and I cried because of one of my little girls, one of my favorites. She's going in the district and platter kill, and I've seen her growth, and I'm advocating for the curators in my pre-K class, and I'm advocating for my son, and it seems like nothing is working. I don't want my son going to Bosse's. He does not deserve to go to Bosse's. Yes, he has behavior issues, but how will he ever be able to change if he's put in a classroom with all behavior kids? I'm not only fighting for him, I'm fighting for all of the behavior kids. You guys are really doing a disservice to our children, placing all of them in the special needs. You guys are really doing a disservice to our children, placing all of them in the same classroom. How are they gonna learn? I've been here fighting for him for over a year. I'm very displeased. I'm very emotional because at this point, I don't know what to do. And I kinda regret even advocating for my son's special services because you guys just threw him wherever you want. I'm standing here and I'm pleading for you guys to do something. Because I fear that if my son goes to Bosse's, the same thing is gonna happen that happened when he was placed in that eight to one class. The behaviors are gonna escalate. I've worked in those schools, and I know what happens. The TAs and the teachers, they don't care. The child is just another check because they get paid off of the child being there. What they do is try not to have the child have a behavior throughout the little eight hours of the day. Please, do something. Because this is starting to get ridiculous. And I'm fighting for this district, and I'm running for board, and you guys are treating my son like this. It's unfair and it's unacceptable.
Would anybody else like to address the board on non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Walker?
Uh, yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm here for two reasons today. Uh, the first being I decided I needed to respond to this blogger that defamed me. All right? I stayed away, I never, I never said one thing over the six years I was a board member. But I'm the son of Edward Walker and Geraldine Mann, who were college students in the South and escaped that in the late forties and came up here, made a home for themselves, my family, me. They put everything they could into me. And I'm not gonna let that go. I decided, I'm gonna speak on that. So there's two things I want to talk about right now. First is one of my favorite poems, which is sixteen ways to look at a mockingbird, written by Wallace Stevens. It has everything to do with looking at things from a perspective, broadening your perspective, knowing how to look at things from the left, right, up, down, all the way around, and then find where you are grounded. The other thing that I want to talk about is this great commercial. It takes place, um, this guy drives his son up to a Jewish temple. Maybe you've seen it. I think it's produced by the Anti-Defamation League. And the kid is looking at his father like, why did you bring me here? And the, and the father says, as the congregation's coming out of the temple, get out of this car and you go tell them, say to their face what I caught you writing down on a blog. Say it to their face. Whoa, his perception changed right then and there. Because his father wasn't gonna have him be a coward. And the things that were, even though they weren't, they weren't that big, but I'm no coward. You know where I am, you know what I do. I can be easily found. And sometimes you look at all these educators here. As someone said, you don't do it for the money. In my case, and I know I'm not the only one, I did it because I had no other choice. I had to do it. This was me. Everyone from Dr. Campbell to even people I didn't get along with at, on this board. I know that sometimes I learned some of the biggest, most important things in my life because I had made myself look like an idiot. And thank God I looked like an idiot because I could not have grown. And I say that to say that these executive sessions that we have is the time where we have to be able to say what we want to say any way we can, and then if you're gonna be corrected, be corrected. I think people can sit here and, and those who know me from that executive session, that I have said, I have got to say what's on my mind so I can find out if I'm right or wrong. How am I gonna know that? And then I turn around and there's, not, not, not about me, but somebody's told somebody, some blogger something. And if we continue to do that in this community, as much as I love this community, we're gonna go back to tribalism, and we will no longer be a community. We're gonna start to talk about constituencies, which is political, and not children who are Finally, I want to talk about the style here. Because obviously, um, this person needed a simple writing course. If you disagree with me, disagree with me. But let your lead be, I disagree with Walker because of blank. Walker is an idiot. Then scratch out, I disagree with Walker. And just write, Walker is an idiot. I can go with that.
Mr. Walker?
I think if I'm sitting down, I, I have two more minutes.
I'd like to hear the poem.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm not, oh.
No.
I'm not gonna read the poem because it's way, it's way too, too, uh, too long. Okay?
How much more time do you need, Mr. Walker?
I'll, I'll cut it in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Point of information, Madam?
Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
All I'm trying to say and convince people here is that this community is more than three hundred years old. We are organized. Every group is organized. It would be so easy for us to fall into tribalism instead of working to be the Star Trek Enterprise. You know what I'm saying? And the only way we're gonna get to that is to be open, honest in our roles. No one can do what Dr. Campbell does because she's been hired to do what she does. No one can say, oh, I don't like what you do. You're not here to like what she does. Work with her. Work with all of these edu, everyone up here. And please, don't do this. If you disagree with me, I'm available. I want discourse. I did this job because I want to learn about who I am, what my foibles are. But don't, if you disagree with me, attack my character or somebody else's character. That's bad thinking. That's not how adults know how to communicate. And going back to communicating, this blogger, who did this first to learn that a good reader thinks like a writer, a good writer thinks like a reader. Let's start with that. And then let's go with this. Basic, who, what, when, where, how, why? Let's get a little more sophisticated. Who, what, when, where, how, why, cause and effect? Let's get, we can, we can go on and on and on and on and on. But my mother and father and grandfather, grandfather, all of them, including the one that ran from slavery and went to Australia and came back here, including the ones that ran away, got caught twice, and nothing happened to them because their owners were too scared of them. That's who I am. And I know each of you come from someplace that is as equally strong. I know that most of you are here not because you want to weaponize something and make it your own thing over what the people who are hired to do. I know that. But we have to be careful where we're going. Very careful. Done, thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board on non-agenda items? Thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby recesses into executive session for the following purpose: matter made confidential under FERPA, employment history of particular individuals, matters leading to the employment of particular individuals, potential litigation, and to obtain advice from legal counsel. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Roll call?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straightiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Duray?
Our regular school year will conclude this Friday. I actually cannot believe it's been a year. Wow. Oof, bless you. However, we would like to remind our families that we are very much open for the summer. We have several extended school year programs being offered during the summer months. More information and links to sign up are available on the right-hand side of our district website, newburgschools.org toward the middle of the page. We will also be sharing information shortly about a summer book club for students in various grade levels. We encourage all of our scholars and their families to actively engage in reading and literacy activities throughout the summer. Newburgh Free Academy graduation is scheduled for this Thursday, June twenty-second at five-thirty. The procession will begin from the pillars in the front of the building shortly before for those who would like to line South Street to celebrate our graduates. Last but certainly not least, I would like to recognize two Board of Education members who have dedicated countless hours to our district. Being a member of our Board of Education is often a thankless job that requires focus and commitment beyond the many, beyond what many see in these meetings. I would like to personally thank Mr. William Walker and Mrs. Carol Mineo for their for their representation of the entire Newburgh and Lourdes City School District community and for their unwavering focus in what is the best, in what is the best interest of our scholars. Thank you. We hope that you remain active in our school community for years to come. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we just wanted to share that they received a plaque.
Thank you for your dedication and service to our schools and communities since, whichever year. Mr. William Walker, Mrs. Mineo, Board of Education Member, Newburgh and Lourdes School District Best Wishes.
I didn't want to say anything because I didn't want to cry, but, um, this has been an exciting nine years, and I thank you all for, uh, helping me to understand different people and different ways of doing things. So thank you. Uh, thank you for getting me off the couch and making me not eat so many potato chips. But this is all about the kids. And each and every one of you, including all of you board members that are gonna be still here, thank you because your different perspectives and your different ideas have opened my eyes and have made me see that we're all about the kids. So thank you very much. So do you want to do your two things?
Tonight I present items four point two and four point three as consent items for your consideration.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
As far as changing the calendar this late in the year, is there a reason why we have to go for a half-day? Or when we get time back for whatever days, can we just keep it the way it is so that the schedules don't change for parents and everyone else? Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
So we wait until the end of June at time because of state aid. Our calendars, there's a minimum amount of days and hours that we must meet for state aid purposes. So if we do have, um, time or we've met those requirements, we do have flexibility to offer a different day staff development opportunities which we brought to the board previously. I agree. I, I wish we didn't have to bring it back, but I'll definitely, when I work with Mr. Forgerit, around the calendars and the days, see if we can make it more consistent for families.
I just know that we received at least one, but on social media, there was a little bit of craziness about changing the, the time.
I don't disagree with you, but I just, I know that historically, the last day of school has always been a half-day. So, but I don't disagree with you. You know, I did, you know, we received one, and I'm not on social media, as you all know, so, um, I can imagine that there was some concerns from parents. We'll definitely look into that, um, for the next year.
Anybody else, questions or discussion on these items? Roll call, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straightiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Duray?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Dr. Manning Campbell. Um, I have items five point one through five point three. Would any member like to separate out any of these items? I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to make one, one comment, please, on, uh, five point two, which is policy fifty-four eleven. So, uh, I am for this policy change as it allows students who decide to and act upon turning over a new leaf, and it gives them the opportunity to participate in extracurriculars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on these items? Yes, Mr. Stroudine?
Are there any academic, uh, requirements for participation in activities?
Yes, there are. Students are required to have completed four point five credits in the year preceding their participation or be actively engaged in a credit recovery plan in order to participate.
As a, as a follow-up, if a student is failing three courses in October, are they able to participate in the, the sport that's in November or in, in October?
They are able to participate if they are engaged in a credit recovery plan that is leading towards academic, uh, growth, and they are being monitored and working with their principal and guidance counselor. If they are not doing so, they would not be able to participate.
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Some of those guidelines are under the regulation to this policy.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments on my items? Roll call, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straightiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Duray?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to our board committees. We're gonna go to the library committee. Mr. Lamar?
Yes, hi. Um, we met, I'm gonna find my notes, on June eighth. Director Mary Lou Carolyn gave her director's report. We had an update on the construction project and the town branch, and we got, uh, some great feedback on the success of the Family Reading Day. That concludes my item.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Um, Ms. Green is not here for curriculum and instruction committee. Could you do it, Ms. Moriarty?
Sure, thank you. Uh, at our curriculum committee this month, we had an update, um, from Twenty-First Century and the Empire Program, talking about the offerings for students during the school year and what will be happening this summer, as well- her director's report. We had an update on the construction project and the town branch, and we got some great feedback on the success of the Family Reading Day. That concludes my item.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Ms. Green is not here for Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Could you do it, Ms. Moriarty?
Sure, thank you. At our curriculum committee this month, we had an update from 21st Century and the Empire Program, talking about the offerings for students during the school year and what will be happening this summer, as well as presentations on the resolutions set up before you this evening.
Thank you. Facilities Committee, Mr. Levenstein?
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Committee met on June 14, and we discussed the following: a request to film part of a movie in NFA, access at Chestnut Street for a USDA team involved with geese control, South Middle School tree planting, buildings used for the extended school year program, and we discussed the facilities use request, which is item 9.9 on tonight's finance agenda. We did not discuss on the 14th any of the other resolutions on tonight's finance agenda, although some were discussed previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levenstein. I'm going to do the Personnel Committee. All items that were discussed in Personnel Committee are on this agenda, and we're going to go to Policy and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Mr. Howard?
Yes, Madam President. The Policy Committee meeting agenda was voted on in the previous agenda under your, under your part. But prior to reading Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, I would like to read something. I want to say thank you to our Board President for creating a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee in our district, joining districts across the state and country who have committed to making a diversity, equity, and inclusion making it a mission. A mission with initiatives to foster positive educational experiences for all students, and move to eliminate barriers that limit a scholar's chances to succeed. With the committee and a superintendent who supports this work, it will allow policies to be put into place to ensure all students have equal, equitable, and inclusive educational opportunities, with an understanding that we did not get here yesterday, and it will not be brought to fruition overnight. But we will get there. To the community, please continue to hold us accountable in our efforts to level the playing field for all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee met prior to this meeting, and it was an incredible meeting. It talked about SMART goals for the different departments in the district. We had SMART goals from each of the following departments: HR, Exceptional Learners, Curriculum Instruction, on the elementary, middle, and high school level. We also had talked about a field trip to the WNBA basketball game, and then we had two resolutions that are on for tonight in regards to conference requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Secondary, Dr. Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have items 7.1 to 7.3. 7.1 includes four resolutions for Exceptional Learners for a Project Search Conference, as well as three Exceptional Learners for the Council on Administrative Special Education Conference, and three for Middle School facilitation and the Staff Through the NISMA Program on the Middle Level Institute, as well as the creation of a club and college credit for St. Thomas Aquinas for our science students.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, sir.
7.1.
7.1, okay. So, I'd like to entertain a motion on 7.2 and 7.3. Questions or discussion on those two items? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Let's go back to 7.1. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Lamar?
Do any of these conferences have promote options, or they require attendants in person? Are they all present? I don't think any of them have.
To the best of my knowledge, they are all in-person live facilitations.
Yes.
A lot of virtual conferences were really held during COVID, but now that we've lifted from that, conferences are in-person, and honestly, the best way to learn is with a live instructor in front of you. It's hard to learn with someone on the screen. There's no interaction. In these conferences, you meet different people from across different states, and it's an opportunity to share best practices.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
As far as conferences in general, is there a plan in place to have maybe just one or two people go and then turnkey the information that is gleaned from that conference so that it can be brought back to the district without having to send, you know, four or five people?
Yes, there certainly is. Wherever possible, we engage in turnkey training, where one or two persons attend the conference, and they come back and share their knowledge with other groups. In this particular instance, if you will notice, the first four, we are sending a team with diverse responsibilities, because this is the best way for this particular conference to be facilitated for our staff and the rest of our employees. In terms of the Council on Administrators, we have a very large Exceptional Learner population, and having the ability to have three of our administrative or mid-level administrative staff members participate in this conference, we're able to come back and reach an additional larger audience. But yes, we do turnkey train wherever possible. It's an effective method of developing professional development.
So, this conference, the Project Search, is that going to be turnkeyed in North as well?
That will be turnkeyed throughout our district, wherever we have need of students who will benefit from those skills.
I do have a concern about, just in general, conferences going forward. When we come to the end of the school year, we don't have copy paper, we don't have working copiers, things like that, and then the people in the buildings that are trying to do Regents prep or just copy items for their students, we run out of money, and then we're sending people on conferences. I think we have to have a balance.
I think student needs always come first. I personally am not aware of a building that has run out of copy paper or those kinds of materials that you speak of, where the same has not been provided to the building from other resources within the district. If that exists, we certainly will follow through on it, but always, student immediate instructional needs are our first priority.
Ms. Moriarty?
Additionally, you can see there that the funding source is federal and general. The majority of the money comes from some of our title funds that are specific for professional development that goes both to teachers and administrators.
Some of that title money can also be used directly for the students. Is that correct?
Not under Title II.
Not under Title II. It's specific to develop professional development across the district.
Can the Board get a breakdown of the title money, whatever the title, Title I, Title II, Title III, and we get a list of specifically what it can be used for? That would be helpful.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments on these items, on this item? Roll call on 7.1, please.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Dr. Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. We're going to move on to Mr. Baer, our Assistant Superintendent for Exceptional Learners.
Thank you, Madam President. The Exceptional Learner Division has one item, 8.1, for the Board's consideration tonight.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Finance. Oh, wait, did you say thank you? Wait, I'm sorry.
My last thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mineo. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, who's not here, but Ms. Peterson is going to be stepping in for her.
So, on the finance agenda tonight, there's items 9.1 to 9.22 on a consent agenda.
Would any member, thank you, okay? Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, sir.
9.3, 9.5, and 9.8.
Okay, let me repeat that. 9.3, 9.5, and 9.8. Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir?
9.18, 9.19, and 9.20.
9.20. And I'm going to repeat those. 9.18, 19, and 20. Yes, okay, so, go ahead.
In the spirit of, you know, moving forward and doing things, it's helpful if we receive this information ahead of time rather than being on the floor. We just had an executive session. We hope to be able to respond, and then we can move through the meeting that everyone can ask every question that they'd like. It's hard to come on the floor to pull these items. We send the, we do send the agendas to you, you know, by Friday, and we're hoping, and I understand everyone's busy, but if anyone has a question, please let's not wait until we get on the floor. That way, we can answer, and then we can move the business of the district.
Okay. So, now, we have items 9.1 through 9.22 without 9.3, 9.5, 9.8, 9.18, 19, and 20. So, that's six items that are pulled out. I'd like to entertain a motion on the bulk of the items. Questions or discussion on the bulk of the items? Yes, sir.
So, just a quick question. 9.11 to the end seemed like a lot of IT items, but my question is a simple one. Are these costs going to the 22, 23 school year or the 23, 24 school year?
Ms. Peterson?
So, the cost will be applied to the 23, 24 school year. Because they're contracts, most of them do expire on July 1, so I have to execute payment and purchase orders to vendors to keep the business of the district continuing.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bulk of the items? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Let's move on to item 9.3. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion on 9.3? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. So, this item here is for a coating that's put on the glass to prevent shattering. Is that correct?
Ms. Peterson?
It's a coating to, I'm sorry, completely blank. It's a coating for that as well as privacy from the outside, so that people do not see what's going on within the building. So, it's kind of a dual purpose.
The reason for me questioning this is it's a $659,000 expense. Have we had a shattering of glass in any of our buildings in the last year or two?
There are instances, and I know Mr. Velez may know a little bit, where there is shattering, but this is also a safety procedure. If people cannot, okay.
So, one of the things that I asked Ms. Roaring to look into with the Director of Security is particularly with the incidents that are happening around the country, and I want to make sure that we protect our facilities. And so, I've asked that we do this for particularly, I don't want to give away our security plan. That's why these questions are so much more important in an executive session, but really to protect in case we do have any breaches of security. I've asked that we do this to our buildings. I don't want to say the location and give information out. We can talk about it a little bit more in executive session, but it's really a security measure to protect our students and our staff and our buildings.
So, the money for this item is coming from where? It doesn't say here.
Ms. Peterson?
So, this is a general fund expense.
So, this expense is for this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year's.
So, we have $659,000 left in this year's budget that we didn't use at all?
There are several resolutions on tonight's agenda that also talk about reserves. Often, the district has reserves that we do allocate. This is a safety measure that we are recommending and feel that is important.
So, if we didn't spend the money on this, this money could be put into reserve to be used next year to possibly, to possibly for other use?
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
If we don't approve this $659,000 expenditure, could this money be carried over to next year in a reserve account?
Mr. Shaw, can you answer that?
If money in the general fund becomes unassigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance could be put into reserves if there's a proper purpose. Depends upon the reserve fund and the need of the fund.
Thank you.
Is there a time limit, Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Prior to issuing the levy, that's when everything gets reconciled.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, Madam President. So, I'm a little confused. So, I understand where my colleague is coming from, but the superintendent stated this was a safety issue. This is a safety issue for our students, for our teachers, and in our buildings. And we need to understand, there's some things going on in this country today that I can understand where she's coming from with that. And I know this is not the forum to talk about it out here, because you let people know what you're going to do and what you have, they defeat that. But the fact that she stated it was a safety issue for our students, for our teaching in our buildings, and then they come on an angle like that, I just don't understand. I don't appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Let's move on to item 9.5, please. I'd like to entertain a motion. Questions or discussion on 9.5? Mr. Stroudine?
There are seven items that are being transferred. Most of them are for salaries. It looks like there's about maybe $2.5 million. So, that would mean that we didn't have the staff that we budgeted for for about $2 million. That impacts the kids. If we don't have the staff that we budgeted for, and then we're going to use it for other things, it's really difficult to understand how we could over-budget, or we didn't hire the people that we needed. What's the case? Is it over-budgeting or we didn't hire the people that we needed?
Ms. Peterson?
So, if we look at the transfer document, there's many lines from which this money has been taken, from electricity, central server, curriculum and development, various lines, two lines, three lines which are instructional. You will also see that there's different things that it's being transferred to to cover. In the content, it was described that there needed to be a covering for foster care tuition, so students that are in other districts that were currently housed other places, special aid, different capital projects. There's often times where the full amount is not expended, and that was the reason why we went with a zero-based budget this year, to look for these discrepancies and budget more appropriately.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Let's move on to item 9.8, please. I'd like to entertain a motion. Questions or discussion?
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
No. These are all programs that are currently in place throughout the district, where we monitor usage and alignment to curriculum. That's one of the goals that we discussed during our budget development.
If they were new, I wanted to know what they were replacing, but that's fine. Thank you.
So any other questions on 9.18? I'd like to entertain a motion, please. I mean, we did that already. So roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes the items for the finance section.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Macklemore.
Thank you, Madam President. On the human resources agenda, I have items 10.1 through 10.18 for your consideration on tonight.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, sir.
10.2 and 10.3, please.
10.2 and 10.3. Any others, board members? I'd like to entertain a motion on 10.1, 10.4 through 10.18. Questions or discussion on the bulk of the items? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mrs. Straight Iron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
We're going to move on to item 10.2. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion on 10.2? Roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.